They have enough of that.
Did you get care of that?
No, I can't. No, I can't ask.
They stand up.
I had his nurse there to mark his.
I know. I had a yellow police report.
Hey, that's why.
There's another one.
Thank you.
I heard you.
I was in the. No, I don't think he was. But I got in nineteen fifty-six.
We are. No, it's not.
No.
Hey! May we have your attention, please? It's six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Chris Head.
Present.
Mary Jean Crigger.
Present.
Mitch Magnus.
Present.
Linda DeWolfe.
Present.
Bill Boswell.
Present.
Keith Kirkpatrick.
Present.
Joel Williams.
Present.
Wayne Kelly.
Present.
You have a corner.
Okay. Please stand for our prayer, followed by the pledge.
Join me in prayer. God, we just thank you for the great city of Harrison. Lord, we thank you for the rain that you've given us. We thank you, God, for the city that we live in. Lord, a reminder, we're servants. We're here to serve the citizens. And, God, we just pray for wisdom and guidance in all that we do. Lord, we thank you for your grace, again, upon the city of Harrison. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can you see that? All right. I'd like to welcome everyone. I think I saw past Mayor Jeff Crockett. Welcome. And we'll go ahead and get started with our department reports. Minutes, that's what we'll get started with. Approval of past minutes?
Men to approve.
Men to approve, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passed. Okay, Chief Kegel.
Thank the mayor and council. I'll try to run through this. The printed copy I gave out to the ones that you were taking. I know some of y'all look at those electronically. If you want a printed copy, if you can get one, let me know and I will be sure and get it to you. So I'm going to start here on page one, and I'm just going to hit the high notes on some of these. Accidents for July, the thirty-five, which is going to bring us to one hundred and ninety-five for year-to-date. We had sixty-seven vehicles involved, and we had eight people that were injured. On our citations, for the month of July, we had four hundred and sixty-five citations issued, which brings us to twenty-one, twenty-eight for the year, and seven hundred and sixty-nine. In July, on our criminal complaints, we had, actually, we had zero for residential burglaries, which is always nice. We only had two reports of commercial burglaries. We had ten DWIs for the month and seven public intoxications. Our total calls for service that came in in July were two thousand one hundred and thirty-three, which brings us to thirteen thousand five hundred and eighty-two calls in the police department for the year. That's up almost six hundred calls over last year. Our bonds and fines collected for the month were five thousand two hundred and four, which brings us to thirty-two thousand and four dollars for the year, which is around sixty-three hundred dollars more than what we collected last year. So we're getting a little more money in. On page two, our school resource officers didn't have anything, our school was not in session. So usually, we send them to an SRO convention, and they work the streets in the summer and kind of help us fill in on patrol, vacations, and all that. On page three, our warrants division, we had Officer Saylor serve two hundred and twenty warrants and made six physical arrests on those warrants. If you go down a little bit here on our sex offender traffic, or sex offender tracking statistics, as of July one, we had thirty-five registered sex offenders in the city. We had no new offenders move inside the city that registered, and we actually had to leave the city limits, which brought us down at the end of month to thirty-three. Animal control, which is on page four, answered a hundred and eight calls. They picked up nine dogs, and four of those nine went out to the Humane Society. The others were able to get back to who they belonged to. And then I'm going to skip back over here to, I'm actually going to go to page nine, which is going to be the July narcotics report. The drugs seized in July from our narcotics division were mainly methamphetamine, marijuana, LSD, and pills. The value of the drugs seized was three thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, and there were fourteen arrests made. Last night, our narcotics guys went out with probation and parole and started doing some home visits. They were actually out till one o'clock in the morning, and we didn't come up with a whole lot. And the word on the street is, because of our roundup, methamphetamine is really hard to find in Harrison, Arkansas, right now. And that's a good thing. I want to, with those guys, I want to kind of touch base on something else before I get over to our last page, which was on Tuesday. I'm sure you've seen KY3, you've seen Facebook, or you've seen the newspaper. We had a little bomb incident from our narcotics officers and officers of the fourteen judicial stop truck, which, when they went up and made their approach, they saw something that they felt was an explosive device. We sent some pictures over to Bentonville to the bomb squad, and they said, empty some houses out, and we'll be there in a little bit. So luckily, they took over, they destroyed it. It turned out to be, didn't turn out to be an actual bomb, but I just want to thank Bentonville. They got over here pretty quick, and they're always good to assist us. And we did some little other stuff going on. The trailer, the truck was pulling a trailer that they stopped. The trailer ended up being stolen out of Branson, so we were able to recover that. And then we did a search warrant on the inside of the trailer, and we recovered twenty-three thousand dollars worth of stolen Vera Bradley. I'm not sure what Vera Bradley is, but I heard it's.
Whoever you know.
But anyway, it was stolen out of Vera Bradley store in Branson. So we worked with Branson, and we were able to get that back to them and all that other way. And if you will scroll over to page eight, which is going to be my community officer's report, which I really want to touch on just a little bit here, soon as I can find it, again, in my mess of paperwork here. I talk about these guys a lot, and we talk about the monthly community engagement activity. And this actually comes, these officers came from a grant that we got through the Justice Department. So they had twenty-three contacts with local businesses. They did thirteen community events, and they reached out to thirteen hundred and forty-five people. But we throw these numbers out, so I kind of wanted to tell you just in July what these two did. They are Officer Mills and Officer Stroud. And they're kind of the, they're not out arresting folks or doing any, they're kind of the face of the department for the public. If somebody needs a class taught, or somebody wants us to come out and speak, they're the ones that go out a lot and do our community speaking for us and represent the department. So to start with, July, it's the vacation Bible school month. So they did numerous. They would go out in the evenings and do vacation Bible schools with the local churches in the city and the county that requested it, and they'd go out and interact with the kids for a night, and they really enjoy that. Also, the Red Cross contacted us, and they asked them if they would help to get together what's called Battle of the Badges. And they jumped right on that, and the Red Cross said they would really be happy if we could bring in thirty units of blood. So they got on Facebook, they went out, they talked to businesses, people, and recruited people. And on the day of the drive, they were able to bring in fifty-four units of blood, which the Red Cross was tickled to death with and said, actually, that's enough to save one hundred and sixty-two lives. So that was a good thing. On July the fourth, Mary Jean, she had a barbecue on the splitter where we did pork butts.
Yes.
For a charity. So I had to get up at four o'clock in the morning to go down there to get my.
It was worth it, John. You got third place.
But we participated in that, we loved it, we had a great time. And I think you raised, what, twelve hundred dollars that you split?
Well, almost eleven hundred.
Okay. And half of that came back to the police department that we use with our Pops and Kids Shopping Program that we do.
Yes.
That was great, so we really appreciate it.
And it was a long day.
It was a long day. Also, they participated in a limping contest over at the Lyrd, or those are grape prices. They're a big hit over there, and they helped them bring in four thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars in one night in donations. And the last two I'm going to talk about, we've just kind of started this. But they got together, because we have a lot of foster families in this area, and they got together with the Call and with DHS and decided they wanted to sponsor a foster kids pool party over at the youth center. So they went out, they contacted with the Call, worked with them. They worked with Chuck, who gave us the pool for free, supplied the lifeguards, it didn't cost us anything. We went out, we got some of the, a bange came over and cooked. And so we brought in fifty-eight foster families. And in that, what's really cool about it is officers and their families go over, and we swim, we eat, we visit with these people, and we just interact. And we probably had eight or nine officers that brought their families over to interact with these people. So it's really a good thing. The last thing I want to touch on, and I have a little video for you guys, is our Pops and Kids Camp that they put together. They worked all year on this, and the SROs pitch in on it. And area groups, businesses come together, they supply us all kinds of stuff. And we did it before school, we were able to hand up backpacks, school supplies. We could do haircuts if you needed a haircut. We did food, prizes, all kinds of games. And anyway, we had two hundred and fifty kids that came to this and brought their families, so. I'll let somebody make us a video. Anyway, I just wanted to recognize them. They really worked hard all throughout the year for the city, and they just do a great job. So that's all I have, unless somebody on the council or the mayor has a question for me. If you want.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chief, I want to say something. You pass it on to him. I take a grandchild to school up at Wildland Peace School every morning, and the officer you got up there that meets them at the door. It's such a good morning to go up there and see her with a smile on her face that she has up here in the morning for us.
And I appreciate that, because actually, the school system does not plan it. We supply, we put her up there. They don't have one, I think, at Wildland. So she goes up there every day and meets and greets, she eats lunch with those kids, and they just love her. So I appreciate that, I'll pass it on to her.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got a few items to update. Chelsea Circle, the sinkhole down at the end of that road. We were able to get the piers installed last week to secure the house that's next to the sinkhole and started excavating on Friday. Unfortunately, the rain has, we will not be doing any digging for a few days at least. As of right now, we are approaching thirty-foot deep, looking for the throat of the sinkhole. We do have some exposed rock ledge that we're starting to see. Should be getting close, we could be going another five to ten foot deep below that. Hopefully, by committee next month, I'll be able to give you a little more update on just exactly how much rock we're going to have to purchase to put back in there. Quick item that I want to update you on, the state of Arkansas passed an increase to the safe water drinking fee that we have to pay for every customer. It's going from thirty cents to forty cents per month per water meter that we have in the system. It's effective this month. So I'll have to actually bring a budget adjustment to you next month, because we typically pay that a year ahead. On the public safety building, new fire and police facility, we did meet with the architects last week, had a good meeting, it was rather, went through a lot of detail as far as building out the program of what's going to be in this facility. They have prepared a draft contract, they've sent it over to me. I've sent a copy to the city attorney, and we are going to review that and try and have everything ready for you to start looking at next month as far as getting the architects lined up to get started. I think that is about it that I have as far as an update, unless you have any other questions.
Mr. Phillips, we, I've had a number of people contact me about the new facility, public safety building.
Yes.
Wanting to know, you know, where it's going to be, what's going to be in it. And obviously, we know most of those, but it's not be good to get something out to the public.
Right now, the primary site that we are looking at is Fire Station Number Two on Industrial Park Road. We also have the softball field next to it. We would end up demoing everything on that site and going back with the new facility there. So that's the ideal location. We are going to have to do a little bit of more research and investigation, make sure that is the best site. But it is a really good location for the fire department as far as their response times and maintaining where they need to be in the community.
Yeah, Wade, I'd like to add, Mitch, I think the reason we brought it to the council last month was when we looked at the timeline, we really felt December or January was really the proper time to bring this information, because we don't have a lot of information on the public safety building yet. But with the other issue going to, possibly going to vote here in about three months, we didn't want to come in after that. We wanted to let the community know what we're thinking on the public safety building.
Yeah, I think that stems from the fact that we were looking at the college building, and that fell through, and all of a sudden.
That's correct.
This popped up, that some of the public, you know, was asking, was this, you know, a backup plan or whatever?
No, it was never a backup plan. Police and fire were really on board to do something all along. I don't think we knew exactly what we were going to do. When Industrial Park Road came up for discussion, it seemed to work. We were probably going to look at that without City Hall, but once the City Hall fell through for us, we decided it made a lot of sense to combine City Hall and let the general budget pay for the City Hall part, which might also save everybody a little bit of money. We'll let you know everything as we go, but there's so much, we don't have costs and things like that.
Yeah, and that's one of the things we're working on with the architect, is to develop the overall budget. That was a big part of the meeting last week, was to, you know, meet with the chiefs and their folks and really assess what their needs are in this new facility, that, you know, those needs now as well as the needs in the future.
Right. And again, council is informed enough and has gotten information, but some of the public, you know, we immediately switched from our focus on the old college building to this, and they, you know, they were just asking questions, and I said, well.
We had determined prior that the police and fire weren't going to be able to fit on the footprint of the college building. We actually, at one time, were hoping that could happen. But even before we lost the college building, we had determined police and fire can't fit there.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Wade. Chief Lowery?
Okay, and in front of y'all is the monthly report. Lot of things in there. We have since, as you all well know, we've taken over building inspections and code enforcement on that side, so that report's in there now. I'm not going to go through a lot of numbers, if you have any questions you can ask. The, again, we're slowly transitioning that over. We're actually starting to work on the clean premise part of it as well, getting that position filled. We did lose one of the firemen, he moved off this last month. He had family issues that he had to leave. He was actually in the video, so we had to give him a hard time about that. But we're going to miss him, he was a good one. So update on the fire engine that was ordered last year. It is completed, for all practical purposes, in Florida. And they sent us some pictures here recently. So that's what it's going to look like. Again, we did do a lot of redesigning. They've shown you some different pictures. And that's the best picture, because it's a different layout as far as paint schemes and stuff. And that will be eventually stationed at Station Three, as it's listed as Engine Three. Some more pictures of it. Those big bright Chevron stripes always, everybody loves those. And so that's kind of the truck. Again, we're going to fly down the first week of September, do the final inspection on it, and hopefully get it delivered sometime in September, so. I want to let you all know, we did get our ladder truck back in service. That's been in the shop for, it was broke down for several weeks, and I finally had to take it to Conway to get it worked on. I'm kind of dreading that bill, but we've got to have it, so we're getting that fixed. You know, we always have busy months in the summer, it's like Chief Kegel on the, doing different functions. We assist in the policing kids camps and do a lot of those functions as well. So we had a pretty busy month as well. Yesterday was the first time in several weeks that we've had any kind of flooding, so you've probably seen gates closed and opened. So we try to stay on top of that as well, so. Anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you. Okay, Luke?
I don't have a whole lot, but.
Good news today.
Yeah, sales tax numbers, we got those in pretty steady, a little bit up for the county side, but the city side is pretty flat. But good news is, it's still top ten months that we've ever had. So we're still doing good. Of course, summer months are always really good, but we've had four of the top eight months this year for county and four out of the top nine in the city. So yes, January hurt, but we're still trucking along and trying to catch it back up. So I think I got with everybody before I left last week, or I guess last committee meeting. So you guys have any other questions for me? From the financials that I put out before then?
No changes to June right now?
Nope, no changes to June. I should have, with the sales tax numbers, I should have July here within the next few days, so.
All right, good, thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
David, you have anything?
No, not unless the council's got any questions for me or anything. I'd be glad to try to answer them, just basically, you know, just need the department. So it goes from anything server back up to updating all the firewalls, making sure we're passed to protect against ransomware or anything else, we're doing everything we can.
He's without a doubt the most popular guy in this building.
That's not necessary. But yeah, there's so, but anyone's, you're always welcome to come in my office and ask any question. Do I have to provide much detail as you want to hear? So nothing, I guess, exciting.
Thank you. Chuck?
Yes, sir. I actually have some really good news. September first, we'll be putting the fencing in for the community dog park. That'll be when they're starting to lay the fencing down. And we are going to set the post in concrete, so it's easier on the maintenance, and it'll look really nice, so. Got that cleared through Tawana's. And last week, we started our pickleball league, which I know some of you guys have heard about. So we had a pretty good turnout Tuesday night. It's open gym from nine to twelve every day, and then Tuesday nights from six to nine. So that's when we're doing our new pickleball league. And we're doing registration right now for volleyball, tackle football, and flag football. So that'll be our next league that's coming up. That's what we got going on at this particular time. So really excited about September first, and I'm going to order the, I've got to get the clearance, but we're going to order the equipment that goes inside the dog park either tomorrow or Monday. So it should be here by the time the fencing is complete, we can get that set up. Really excited, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Shawna?
No, sir, nothing today.
Okay, any questions for Shawna? Okay, good, let's move right into the committee reverse. Joel, we have a representative with House of Hope here tonight that wants to speak to us about Safe Heart Program.
Good evening. I'm Jean Hankins, and I am standing in as proxy for my director, Rhonda Matthews, who has a new grandbaby coming just any minute. I just, we didn't actually prepare a presentation for you this evening. We just want to know how you feel about the safe parking. We have been doing it for the past two weeks. We actually have two people there. We have a young man who works every day, and we have a young woman who's there. We have not had any issues whatsoever, except for one night, our young man went to work before he changed out the placard. And we were so grateful, because Chief Grady, Grady, one of our, one of your, I'm so scared. One of your officers stopped by and said, hey, is that the right color? Are you supposed to be here? And he really, he really gave him a hard time, and it was great. We were like, yes, we are so on board, this is wonderful. So we were thrilled with that. We haven't had any issues with anyone trying to stay there who is not supposed to be there. So right now, everything is working just as we had hoped that it would. We do still have security on site, and we're really pleased to have him. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Jean?
I handed out a note to each one of you, because I'm not talking real good right now, and I wanted you all to read it. This is my feelings on this, and I want you all to be aware of them.
Thank you.
Okay, does this need to be read, or?
No, just as long as everybody appears.
Okay, I don't know if you have a copy?
I do not.
You're welcome to mine.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, any questions?
Not other than the city attorney may need to check this.
He's got a copy of this.
Okay, but that's it.
Yeah. So we're not looking for any action tonight, you just wanted to make a report?
Yes. And I would like to ask, when should we return for your determination?
Well, the committee meeting would be in two weeks from, is it two weeks this time? Two weeks. And if you come back at that time, and then the committee will entertain it, and then they can move it on to the next council meeting. So maybe you and Rhonda can come back together.
We will, thank you so much.
Our chief will be here then also, and I know he attended the meeting that. Okay, our chief will be here then also, and I know he attended the meeting that we had with Rhonda, so.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming. You did great. Okay, let's go down the line to Mitch. You're blank tonight.
Yeah, I have nothing on finance, Mr. Mayor.
You okay with that?
I'm good.
How about Linda?
Um, no, we had a...
I see your mom's with us. Good to see you.
No, that's my good friend.
No, you're bright, you're, you're neighbor. Your neighbor, your neighbors with your...
That's my dad, not my mom.
Well, you never know.
She's 36.
It's my dad, not my mom.
She can fill in.
That's right.
Well, I guess I asked for that one, so.
Yeah, you walked into it. We did have our culture competency class that the municipal league came up and taught. It was an interesting class. I was hoping for something a little bit different. I've talked to some of the department heads, and I think maybe I'll talk to instructor next year when he comes back. We'll work on that a little bit, but we had 54 people, mostly supervisors and city employees that attended.
It seemed like a good thing, and there was very little money spent on our part, if any.
Yes, I believe.
I mean, it would just...
I think $52 from police and 52 from fire to cover it.
Excellent, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Mary Jean?
I think my part's pretty well covered with my two chiefs' report.
Yeah, boy.
Good job, Mark, on the fixtures, and good job on the photos of the, of the deal. I thought that was great.
Bill, we have one item under you this evening.
Yes, sir, and we're probably going to ask for some action on this, and I'm going to let Wade explain the details. This is really pretty routine business, but Energy is doing some upgrades that goes across city properties. I'll let Wade explain, then we'll go from there.
Okay. Yeah, Energy's working on upgrading some of their facilities in the southeast portions of town. They do need, they've asked for an easement across what we call the city farm. It's where the wastewater plant, the compost facility, the shooting range is. They'll actually be doing this work along existing lines that they have crossing our property, but they have asked for a 40-foot wide easement through that area where they'll be working, and they have offered $5,224 for compensation for that easement, which is just in line with their normal formulas that they use for making offers on these easements. With it being a land issue dealing with the city, I wanted to come to council and get authorization and approval to have Mayor Jackson move forward with signing that easement and getting the compensation. With that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
I think, I think what we need to do, this doesn't need to wait. We don't need to take it back to committee, it's over.
I agree.
And Energy's waiting on us to give them the green light to continue on, so.
Do we have a motion?
I would go ahead and make a motion that we approve the easement access to Energy for this project across city properties.
And we got a second by Wayne? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you, Wade.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're coming right down to Chris Head tonight. First item, I believe is a resolution.
Yes, tonight, this is a basic housekeeping to resolve the budget and amend it to match our expenditures, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to approve?
Okay, we have a motion, second. Did I hear a second?
Yes, second.
Bill.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We're going to do a roll call, I believe, on this one. Roll call, please.
Heathcree Patrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. You folks are going to find that we may be doing roll call a little more often than we did in the past, if something our city attorney has requested, so we're going to do what he says. Next.
All right, the next item that we have to address is an ordinance amending the plumbing code, and we have been asked by Chief Lowery to get this completed tonight. That means run it through all three readings and adopt it. So, with that said, I would entertain a motion to...
I would make a motion that we place the ordinance on its first reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to know what the urgency is that we have to do this through, so quick.
Chief Lowery, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, the main reason is, in researching the previous ordinance, it, it talked about performing inspections on our water and sewer systems within the boundaries of the city limits of Harrison. We've obviously found out in the transition that we go out and inspect our water systems out of the city limits, so we felt like it was a legal conflict that needed to be addressed. And so, while we're waiting, we're kind of in limbo as far as are we doing this legally or not? Did I address it correctly, Grant?
That's right. I mean, the, the normal process, it would take three months, and so you all would be questioning whether you have the authority to inspect outside of city limits during that time.
I'm good with that.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heathcree Patrick?
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance replacing ordinance number 1420 regarding the city of Harrison, Arkansas plumbing code.
Okay. Make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heathcree Patrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance replacing ordinance number 1420 regarding the city of Harrison, Arkansas plumbing code.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call again.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heathcree Patrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we enact an emergency clause and put it into effect immediately.
Second.
Okay. Roll call again, please.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heathcree Patrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. All right, we're, I think we're now to the final item?
No. Property Maintenance Code.
Property Maintenance Code. They've four of them.
Well, on the exhaust ordinance, we determined at our committee meetings that Chief Grady had said that that's something that we can address through a state law, so we're going to, we're going to drop the exhaust ordinance and move on to the ordinance pertaining to the property maintenance code, and tonight, we want to put it on its first reading. So, I would entertain a motion that we put the property maintenance code on its first reading.
Second.
We want it by title only?
By title only.
By title only.
We need to suspend the rules for that, too.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
We need a motion to suspend the rules if we're going to read by title only.
Yeah, motion to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call?
Mary Jean?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heathcree Patrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance titled The Harrison Property Maintenance Code, reviewing and replacing ordinance 1358 and 1349 dealing with clean premises violations and enforcement.
Okay. All right, so now we're down to what a lot of you have come here for tonight, I believe. And I'd like to explain what we're, how the process will continue. We'll open it up for a motion and a second, and once we have a motion and a second, we'll offer comments from the audience. And if you'd just be respectful during that time and take a minimal amount of time, you're welcome to come to the podium and say whatever you would like. After that time, we'll go back to discussion by the council, and then we'll have a roll call vote for the final and third reading of this ordinance. Okay, any questions from the audience before we start? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we place ordinance number 1448 on its third and final reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anybody from the audience want to speak to this issue?
Yeah, I will. Somebody else is.
Come on up, Rick. Haven't seen you in a while. We know you've been in New Orleans, and welcome back.
I hate humidity.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
On this one here, I just, a little bit of clarification. The .75 is for $39.9 million?
Correct.
And the meeting we had the other night, that was supposed to be a bond issue, cannot be a cost overrun. That's it, 39.9. Is this whole project costing 39.9? And if so, if we're spending that money on the project, where's the money for the interest coming from?
I'm going to let Luke speak to that. Luke?
I might actually defer to our bond attorney here, if that's all right, but I'll let you go ahead, and you probably better answer that than I could, so.
Thank you, Luke. Mayor, members of council, we have Ryan Bowman, Friday Hilton, and Clark, serving as bond counsel to the city in connection with the proposed bond issue for the park and recreational improvements. The 39.9 million is the maximum principal amount of bonds that can be issued for this project, so that is a ceiling. No more than that can be issued. You can certainly issue less than that amount if you don't need that amount for the project. That 39.9 million includes your project costs. It includes all costs of issuance associated with the bond issue. It also includes funding a debt service reserve, and that's a type of rainy day fund that is funded with bond proceeds. It's held by the bond trustee and is only used in the event that sales tax collections are not sufficient to pay debt service on the bond issue. Then the monies in that debt service reserve can be used to repay bondholders. The money's kept for the life of the bond issue and then is used to pay off the bonds at the final maturity. To answer the question with respect to interest, the 39.9 million is solely principal, okay? So, there will be interest on that 39.9 million dollars that will be repaid with collections of the .75 percent sales and use tax. So, the city is actually paying more than 39.9 million dollars back. We can't tell you what that interest rate component will be because the bonds have not been offered to investors. And so, once the election occurs in November, assuming that we have a successful vote, the bonds will then be offered to investors by your underwriter, Cruz and Associates, depending on what market conditions are at that time. Then we'll come back to the council and tell you what your final borrowing cost will be. That answer the question?
Let's see, Rick, you want to come back?
Yeah. Okay, so we're, we're at 39.9, and the way he just explained it, the interest is going to be taken off that on top. The other night, I was asked, I asked the same question, and they said it is the max. Well, now it sounds like they can go to 39.9. If they get 2.1 percent on a bond issue, the first year is $3 million. That's coming back off that 39, that's interest only. Life term of the loan could be 60, 50, 60 million, and that's what I'd kind of like to know a little bit more before we go putting it before the voters, because right now, they're thinking this whole project's going to cost them 39.9. And I came back in this town, I asked Robin Reese, which is on chamber board and everything. I said, "How much is this going to cost?" And she goes, "39.9." That's not the number this is going to cost. This is going to cost in the upper part of 50 to 60 million dollars, and that's what the taxpayers need to know, not just the little amount. Other than that...
We also have the man with Cruz and Associates here tonight. Would you like to speak to that, sir? Because I just spoke to your partner yesterday, and he shared another number with me. I have been sharing that the reason we need to do this now is because the interest rates are crazy low, and if we wait, all of a sudden, they'll be 6 percent, and this thing will be off the table. I was quoted 2.7 about two months ago, just yesterday, 2.3, which is, and no telling what it'll be when it happens, maybe lower, maybe higher, but we do know it's in the area of an all-time low number.
Rob, excuse me. My name's Marshall Hughes with Cruz and Associates. Pleasure to be here with you this evening. And, yeah, we actually are refinancing transactions right now that were issued five years ago that we never thought we would have the, an opportunity to refinance because rates were so low. So, for a borrower, it is an attractive time to borrow. And we are showing the, and these are, like I said, all estimate numbers. Right now, it looks like the project would pay off in a maximum of around 14 years, and we're showing an average debt service of 3.2 million right now. So, excuse me, 3.2 million. It's about 44, 45 million dollars in principal and interest over the life of the transaction at current market rates. And as you said, you know, rates can go up and go down, but that's at today's rates.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Sure, absolutely.
This is a large project, obviously, but there are projects around this area for the same amount. The hospital, and just this last week, the Harrison Public Schools refinanced all of their bonds. The total bond was $43 million that they were refinancing, and it saved the patrons of the school district $4.8 million over the life of that bond, those bonds, to do that now. I'm not sure of the exact rate that the school got. We were on the front end of the, of the reduction that these rates were going in. We thought we were going to save about $900,000 when we first started the process. We ended up saving $4.8 million. If you're going to do this project, this is the time to do it. The cost savings would be substantial.
Rick, you want to come back? You're more than welcome to.
Well, just back once again, as we had a meeting on Tuesday night, that they've already done 16 meetings, and even though the question was put out, "How much is this going to cost?" done 16 meetings, and even though the question was put out, "How much does this can cost?" And they said, "It's a bond issue, it's 39.9 million." And I said, "Okay, that's fine. When you collect it, 39.9 million dollars, the bond's paid off." And I was told yes. At this point here, we're not looking that it's gonna be paid off in 39.9. So I'm not, it, it, the issue isn't that I'm for or against this right now. My vote is only one. And I'm not trying to fight it, but I want the voters to have all the information. And that's all there is to it. So if it's gonna be 45 mil, it's 45 mil.
Rick, we, Luke and I have known all along, and I think everybody else involved, that the cap that we can borrow is 39.9. Now, we knew without a doubt we would have to pay more than 39.9 back. We knew that. I don't know what was said the other night, but we, we've known from the beginning that 39.9 is the cap that we can borrow. That's, that's very clear.
The taxpayers and the voters need to know it clearly. And that's all I'm saying.
And we have stated it very clearly. I don't think we have ever been unclear in that area. Do you think so, Luke?
I mean, I think every time we went somewhere, it's, we will spend 39.9 million dollars on the facility and project.
Sure.
If that's open to interpretation. I didn't know that, but that was...
Well, that's a good clarification to make for the interest.
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely. That's what we're here for. And going forward, we're gonna be at many other places. Actually, Monday evening, folks, if you want to come, Woodland Church. We're not only gonna be talking to the congregation, but 200 families in the vicinity of where the project is proposed to be have been invited. So that ought to be a real good evening if you want to come and maybe you'll learn more about it. We want to get, absolutely, I swear, folks, we want to get all the information to as many people as we can. We believe the more information out there, the more supportive the community will be with the project.
I think from that aspect of it is, this is kind of a common sense thing, we're talking about borrowing money. It's no different than buying a house for 200,000 or going and buying a new car for 15,000. That's the amount of principal, 39.9 million, 200,000, 15,000. And your contract plainly states, this is how much money you have at this much interest, and this is what you're also going to pay.
Sure.
I have bought numerous homes, numerous cars, all I quite frankly thought of about what's the final, you know, what am I going to pay? Not so much in what interest rate we're gonna get, knowing that I'll have to pay interest. There's no difference. I mean, and I'm not trying to put Rick, you know, back him into a corner or anybody else.
Sure, we don't, we don't know that number.
Yeah, it's a, it's a common sense thing. This is, we're borrowing money, just like somebody would to buy a house, and there'll be interest on top of the principal. And the 39.9 is the principal amount that we're going to borrow. Does that make sense?
Mind if I finish one last thing on that?
Sure.
There is a large percentage of people in Harrison who've bought a house, never bought a car. Right now, they're struggling to buy either their medicine or their food. So to say that this is some, it's common sense, yes, the rest of us have bought things and done things, but there's a lot of people here in this town. And House of Hope's got people in this town. We've got people at Hope's, we've got all these different places around here. These voters do. Their people do. And all of a sudden, once again, it's no attack, no personal attack. I want an informed voter. If I win, you guys think it's a win/lose category? If I win, 3,000 people vote on this. If I lose, normal 700, 800 people vote.
I'd say you're gonna be closer than 3,000. And, and Rick, that's what we want. Luke and I and several other of these people, they have been studying this issue for a long time. And I wasn't. If somebody would've told me about this before I went to Batesville, I would've said, "You're crazy." But after being there and after learning what it can do, the more information I got, the more I moved in supportive of this. I didn't come out immediately in January and say, "Yeah, let's go." I mean, it was a process, and it's a learning process. And if the voters decide they don't want it, we don't want it either. We honest to God, we're here to represent the people of Harrison and actually Boone County.
Right. And I appreciate the other night you accepting the open forum meeting that we're gonna have on the 24th of September.
Sure, you bet. We're happy to. We're happy to.
And it's just question, guys. It's all it is, is more questions, and it's not, the focus that they've been putting out is actually, there's a lot of people in this community, one being going directly against businesses in this town. That's harsh, you know? It's, it's harsh to put two or three businesses, put a lot, a lot of money into building new places and new fitness centers and put something up against it. They have something to say. And, and, you know, they're all just wanting to know. I mean, there's a lot of knowledge. I've been back in town a week and it's been crazy. But no, I appreciate you guys. You're guys in the hard dilemma. I mean, it'd be a really cool asset that Harrison, the bottom line is, Jim Harrison for you.
Excellent. And, and one comment, I know that Mr. Boswell and several of us have been approached by those businesses. And I, we do take their concern seriously. And when you, none of these decisions, the only thing I'm 100% for that I know in my heart is my children and Jesus Christ. Everything else is just a partial. I'm a 90/10 or a, you know, a 50/50 or a 60/40 on these things. But as you hear things from different communities, it, it strikes you in a certain way. His comment about Batesville, I was with a lady from Calico Rock, Arkansas yesterday. Shirley Cheryl is her name. And every weekend, her or one of her circle of friends or family go to the Batesville Center. She drives 54 minutes to, to use that facility. So I don't know what our reach will be there, but that's being paid for when they come into town. And i, if they buy anything when they're here, so if somebody from Marshall or Jasper or anything like that, they're helping to pay for that. In the comment that she made to me is, she said, "I wish a place closer like Mountain Home would have something like this." So in, the biggest concern I have, I understand the taxes and they do, it's a lot of money. The school taxes are a lot of money. But one of the, my biggest concern is that we will build it and it won't be used. Now, they assure me that it will be, so.
Sure.
I've never been to one of these meetings before.
You're welcome.
And I'm kind of new to town. I, I'll introduce myself. My name is, oops, Bill Van. I was a businessman in Springfield, Missouri. I sold my businesses. I lived in Nixa. I had the pleasure of being able to use the Nixa Fitness Center. Ozark, Missouri also has an incredible fitness center. And I had a, two daughters at the time that were, you know, high school age kids. And we would use those facilities all the time. My first daughter is through college now. I've moved here in the last two years. And when my daughters come to visit me, they're like, "There's nothing to do here, Dad. Why did you move to this town? Why didn't you move to Ozark? You loved it there." And I'm like, "Well..." And that was something that we would always just do. You know, we'd get up in the morning and we would go to the rec center, we would swim, we'd rock climb. I was a scout leader. We use the facility for our scout things. We did our pander, penguin derbies and our, all that kind of stuff in there. And it was constantly in use. And even, one in Ozark even had a little food court in it. So if you didn't feel like going home and making dinner, you could pick up something there and, and eat. And it was good food. It was like Panera quality food that I had there. So I, I think that it'd be a tragedy if Harrison did not build this. It is definitely needed. I drive three times a week. I still keep my, I still keep my Ozark subscription, I guess you'd call it, my card to get in. I still have it. And we still go down there. And when my daughters come to visit, we all hop in the car and for old time's sake, we drive to Ozark, which is a long drive, and have a great time at the rec center, and we drive back to Harrison where there's nothing to do. So that's just my two cents. And I can also tell you this, that the city of Nixa, when they built their rec center, they put their pool outside, they put all the meeting rooms and all that on the inside. They immediately realized that was a mistake. Ozark had an indoor pool. And a lot of people from Nixa were going to Ozark to use their facility. I was one of them. Nixa didn't like it that I had an Ozark subscription because I was in Ozark. We'd stop at Sonic while we were in Ozark. We'd stop at the grocery store while we were there too, because we needed milk or whatever. And it was taking revenue away from Nixa. They realized they'd made the mistake. And last I heard, they're thinking about trying to cover it because it was a mistake. And I, I've seen the plans, you guys are looking to build here. It's gonna be able to be used all the time, all the way around. And I think that's the way it should be. So that's just my two cents.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Wasn't like, wasn't expecting that, but thanks.
Good evening. My name's John Dewitt. Many of you know me kind of, but not really. When I was a kid, growing up, I had a single mom. My mom couldn't afford to take me to a gym. And beside the point, most of the gyms in this town don't allow small kids to be there But you know what? The boys' club in our town saved me. Because it gave my mom a place for me to go while she could go do laundry and, and a few things like that. She couldn't afford much, but she would take me to the Boys and Girls Club and I could watch movies, I could play pool, I could play basketball, anything I wanted to do, crafts, whatever I wanted to do, that was provided for me. A center like this is invaluable, especially to those single moms and those families that are struggling and those kids that need a positive influence in their life. So they don't wind up doing things that they shouldn't or ought to do. And then they end up visiting with our police officers. And I don't want to see that. I want to see our kids have something to look forward to. I want to see them have something that's gonna put something positive in their lives. And I agree with my friend that just spoke. It would be criminal in my mind if we don't go forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi, I'm Avery Hensley. I'm a 13-year-old student at Harrison Middle School. I've been part of the swim team, so this would be great, because we drive 40 minutes twice a week to Berryville. We just like stop at Sonic every night, the gas money, it's crazy. So it would be great to have this. My friends, we don't have so many places to go. We, in a few short years, we will meet, we will be wanting jobs, have money to do stuff, but there's not actually many places to get jobs. We go to the gas station, but like, who wants to work at a gas station? This would be a great place to go and have a job as a lifeguard or counselor. We go to Michonda's house all the time. And I'm sure she gets tired of having us over there, four girls, all the time squealing and screaming and stuff. This would be a great place for us to go and have fun with our friends. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Who's your friend?
I'm Anna. I'm 14 and I go to the high school. I play volleyball and swim, and this would be a good opportunity to like, for that stuff. Because I, I mean, we go to Berryville, like Avery said, and this would just be great to have here for us.
Yeah, well, that's great. Thank you, girls, for sharing that.
Hi, can I say something?
Yeah.
Avery just finished representing Harrison at the Second National, at her second time for the National Junior Olympics Team for Swim.
And you are on KY3.
No pressure.
Well, Jim, good to see you tonight. I haven't seen you before here, so do you want to, you want to share? We're happy to listen.
Well, I'm not on board with this.
Right, I understand. I appreciate that.
I think it's too much money. I have rentals. It's gonna cost more than a month to buy the groceries. You're gonna charge monthly to participate in this rec center. None of my tenants will be able to afford that. There's a certain segment of Harrison that's gonna be able to use this. But there's a lot of people here that are not. The chambers changed course in the last six months or so?
They have, yes.
It's about time. It seems like if you really want to do something like this, you could do it for a hell of a lot of this money. And when somebody approaches that they want to build a business here, you could say, "We cut taxes half a cent," instead of saying, "We raised taxes." It seems like that would be a lot more encouragement to them than a rec center. We live in the middle of the Ozarks. There's a lot to do here. Has to do with ranching, hiking, outdoor sports. I just don't see where the majority of people in Harrison are gonna use this facility. And that's kind of the key to it. Because they're all gonna pay for it. And I don't think you're gonna get a lot of people from Boone County. It's inconvenient, and there's the cost thing again, but they're all gonna pay for We've got a facility. We've got a pool. We had to have some repairs done on it recently. And that wasn't budgeted. We had to scramble to get that money. And of course, that was a different administration, but...
Sure.
But this is a 20-year deal, 30-year deal, and there's gonna be a different administration. And how good a job they're gonna do of keeping this place up is questionable. It's a big deal. It is a really big deal. And it's gonna take some talent to do it and to keep it in operating condition. And I can't even imagine, as a businessperson, that this would even come close to paying for itself. So you've got the majority of people in this area that are gonna pay for it and not gonna use it. Okay? And the other thing that I would like to say is, I would like to see this on a regular ballot instead of a special election. And I hate to be a cold...
I understand.
Throw cold water on this, but it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And I don't mind paying for it, you know? I can afford...
Jim, that's what we wanted to hear tonight.
We all can afford that. But I have a lot, I've got some rental property, and they can't. They really can't. They're scrambling to make the rent. Be nice to have, but...
Thank you, Jim.
But I don't think we can afford it.
I'd like to share, I agree with you, Jim, on everything except for one thing. And that's the idea of the lower-income people not being able to use it. I think they're the ones that are gonna benefit the most because, and I'd like Luke to address this here in a minute, they're not only gonna be able to use it, they're gonna be able to stay out of trouble. I think John addressed that. When they're at this facility, it's gonna be a good thing. It's gonna be much better than those kids roaming the neighborhood. And we're gonna make sure, Luke, you want to just say something about that? I know I've, I've said most, but you can share a little bit.
And I think we all share your concern as well. You know, we would like to make this an affordable place for everybody to go to use. And, you know, we're looking at all those options, whether it be scholarships available for those that are less fortunate. I mean, you know, we've been in contact with Shonda to see if there's anything we can do from the housing authority as far as who qualifies, who wouldn't qualify, and looking at free and reduced lunches, if they qualify for that, seeing, seeing how we can work with that and making sure that it is affordable for those to, to come use this facility.
Those are the people we want in there. They need to be in there. Yes, ma'am, with your hand up.
In regards to a couple of different things in addressing, I agree that in, in some areas that we do need better facilities. And I'm not for or against. I need more information...
Sure.
...right now. We do need better facilities for our kids. You know, I have three kids that are now all grown and out of the house. Some struggled more growing up than others for various reasons. Not all kids are outdoorsy kids. Some don't want to farm or ranch or hike. Some want a place that they can go and, you know, play sports or hang out with their friends in an environment to where they're not getting in trouble. Because, you know, it's, it's kind of a running joke, and I've heard a lot of, you know, I'm sure a lot of you guys have heard the phrase that in this town for teenagers, you either get drunk, get high, or get pregnant. And...
You know, I've never heard that.
I've heard it a lot. Right. And, you know, but some of the questions that, you know, that I am wondering, and he addressed one of them with the scholarships for those, I was a single mom of three kids for a long time. I wouldn't be able to afford $20 as a kid for a membership, you know, so they'd be at home...
And it would not be that number. But we would want to help you and your family.
Right. So, you know, and, and I don't know, and it might've been brought up because I'm still learning about this, of what will the memberships be as far as, you know, will there be family memberships? What are, what's the cost of an individual membership? And then, you know, I thought that was a great idea with the people who qualify for the free and reduced, you know, lunches, they're on a sliding scale or something, or a work-for-play, you know, a, some type of a volunteer program and, you know, because that's really good, like the Boys and Girls Club type... that's really good, like the Boys and Girls Club type, you know, thing of that, you know what, sure, come and use our facilities. What can you, you know, what is your talent that you can help with? You know, can you help clean up the trash one day a week or something in lieu of your, so it's, we're not giving them a handout, it's a hand up, it's learning responsibility, earning your, earning your keep, basically. And, you know, a lot of kids, my kids have always had chores, and they are more prideful when they, you know, when they do those type chores, or they earn the money, you know. And who, what entity will actually be, I guess, governing this? Will it be a Parks and Recreation Facility, or will, you know, obviously, I guess, since it's with bonds, it would be run by the city?
Sure.
So then, you know, the staff members, are they going to be, like the teenager said over here, are they gonna be-
Yeah, those would be perfect, wouldn't they?
Right, yeah, you know, is it gonna be run by, you know, teenagers with older, you know, adults with experience to oversee them and things like that? Those are some of the things that I'm interested in, and, hey, the cost is very scary. It is, because what if we don't? You know, Batesville's in a whole nother mindset, and, you know, I feel like our city is kind of getting out of that good old boy, who's your daddy mentality? You know, I've lived here thirty years, I'm sorry, twenty years, and I still get asked, "Who's your daddy?" "What's your, what's your family name?" You know, things like, does it matter? I've lived here and paid taxes for twenty years. No, I'm not from here. So, you know, things like that, and I think that is, that's really important to progress. We've gotta do something. If it's a forty million dollar facility, that's y'all's, or I guess the taxpayers' decision on how to do that, but there's got to be something for our youth, especially, and our older generation too, I mean, everybody, but I think, to me, that's who I see it helping the most, is these kids that, you know, are underprivileged, underserved, and then, you know, the older generation that need a place to go to, get out of the house and socialize and not be so isolated, because maybe they've lost a loved one, and, you know, but those are just some of the questions that I have about it.
I received a text last week from a lady, and I receive many every day, and I'm gonna tell you, no matter what you think, most, at least the people that text me personally are supportive, but this lady said, "I live in the county, and I weigh three hundred and sixty pounds, and I can't wait. I'm gonna drive from Bruno or somewhere over there every day to get in the water." She weighs three hundred and sixty pounds, and she's excited that this could save her life, so, and wellness and everything else, you know, we talk economic development, but that's really at the bottom. That's just a bonus. It's really about quality of life and wellness and health. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I got a question about the sales tax.
Yeah, that's gonna be Luke. You wanna stand up?
Let's say this fund is paid off. What happens to that sales tax coming in then? Does it disappear?
It does. I can even answer that.
Okay, is that gonna be in a voidable contract, or what's it gonna be in form where it don't, because I mean, the way it's listed up there, it says sales and use tax within the city of Harrison, or something.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, that does not go away. That quarter does not. It's the big one, the point seven five, that goes away. Mr. Boma, would you like to address that? I mean, because that's a good question. It's, we don't even get the money.
Right, both collections, both sales tax go to the bond trustee. Bond trustee will keep all of the collections of the three-quarter cent tax and apply that solely to debt service on the bond issued, so the city will never receive collections of that three-quarter cent tax. To the extent the trustee does not need collections of the quarter cent tax, that will come back to the city on a monthly basis to be used to operate and maintain your park and recreational facilities. Once the bonds are retired, the three-quarter cent tax goes away. When we get to that ordinance, ordinance is fourteen fifty, the tax can only be used to pay debt service on the bonds, and will terminate when those bonds are retired. According to the analysis run by Cruisin' Associates, I just heard Mr. Hughes say that roughly that's a fourteen-year repayment period. So at the end of that term, whether that's fourteen years, or twelve years, whatever that period is, that three-quarter cent tax will terminate. The quarter cent will stay on the books, the quarter cent is a permanent tax. And there's been some discussion about can the city afford this, and I think maybe the issue to think about is, can the citizens afford it versus can the city afford it? With collections of your one percent sales tax, Cruisin' Associates would not offer your bonds unless collections of that aggregate one percent sales and use tax could repay this bond issue. And obviously, investors want to know that collections of that one percent sales tax in the aggregate can repay this bond issue. So I can assure you that Cruze will not offer your bonds at the appropriate time unless collections of that one percent tax, the three-quarter in particular, will be used to repay that bond issue, and you can afford it. So when we talk about can the city afford it, yeah, we won't do the bond issue unless the city can afford it, and when I say that, I mean collections of your sales and use taxes.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna throw up on the screen one minute a graph showing the sales tax, and it's, sorry about that, but that was jazzy. That's not it. There you go. As you can see, the first is where we are right now. Out of twenty, or whatever that is, I think it's around twenty cities between, what, five thousand and twenty thousand? Ninety-five hundred and twenty thousand. We are at the very low. When this goes into effect, both the three-quarter and the quarter, we move up to just right of center. Then, after it's retired, we go back to the third lowest among those cities. So, just for your information, that's kind of the tax at a glance. Thank you for bringing that up.
One of the things that we've, in discussions with the mayor and Luke and others, is to try and put this in some frame of reference so that people understand when they go to Walmart and buy something, what is it, you know, how's it gonna affect them? My wife went to Walmart last night, I just checked to see how much it cost. It was a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, okay? That means that she's, if this tax is in effect, she will have spent a dollar and thirty-eight cents more on that hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That's it, a dollar thirty-eight. After that, it would be a dollar and, I mean, it would be roughly-
Thirty-something cents.
Thirty cents.
I like your McDonald's example.
Well, yeah, your company, McDonald's-
Sweet tea, it was.
Sweet tea. I said sweet tea, you're right. That goes from a dollar ten to a dollar eleven for fourteen years. I think it'll pay off before that.
Yeah, Perrigo, by the way, they looked at a twenty-year bond issue, and they paid off in eight, eight years, so, and we're not taking into consideration increased revenue due to this facility. He's running pretty much a flat line or a small increase. All right, this has been good tonight. Rick and Jim, thank you, guys. We appreciate you. Liz, you wanna come up?
No, I'll talk from here. I work with older folks, I always have, and it's something I love to do. My father lives on seven hundred dollars a month. My next-door neighbor lives on six hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. They own their homes, their property taxes are broken, but then they have the best choice, which was that Rick was talking about. Am I gonna get antibiotics I need on an emergency basis? Am I going to be able to buy food this month? A dollar thirty-eight, by the way, that's a look for brand and pack of bologna. You're welcome. Okay? They have to make these decisions. What if my car breaks down? Well, now I can't afford the repair. Now, they're one lateral line and one glitch in their well away from absolutely having nothing. So, yes, our kids do need something to do. Our children do, yeah. And you know what we come from out there. We got nothing. Ten cents on a dollar, that's a lot to us out in the county. I'm just asking y'all to think about us too.
But it's one cent on a dollar.
Well, even one cent on a dollar. If we need breaks you give right now, we'll probably-
I agree. I'm looking for clarity like Rick is, and making sure that everyone understands. So when people have said, "Hey, this costs ten percent," nine percent of it's currently in effect.
And what are they supposed to do?
Like I say, this is a difficult and sensitive issue, and for those individuals, whether it's an increase in the state sales tax, or the county sales tax, or these taxes, is harmful.
I'm very, very happy for like this, but, I mean, that is fantastic. Nobody wants to cut, nobody wants hanging over their head. If you don't like this, you don't like kids. That's emotional blackmail.
No, and that's, I don't think anybody said that either.
I've never heard that.
No, it's been said to me.
Yeah, Liz, another thing I want to share with you on that, and I understand your dad, and he won't use the facility-
If not, my dad is a lock my name is.
But there's a lot of those people that will also use the facility and come and become healthier in life. We have heard for years and years and years, all I've heard from elderly people, my wife is one, "I want to have a place indoors where I can go do aerobics, and I want to, I want to be in there all the time." So there's gonna be tons of benefit to the elderly community, but thank you for-
There are a lot of in-home families that will not be able to use the facility.
And I'm sure there are some. I agree, there are some that will and some that won't.
There's what, sixty, seventy different agencies in Harrison for in-home care? There's a reason for that, Jerry. I'm just asking you guys to think about what you're doing. Yes, our kids do need something, but do we need it at the expense of the health and welfare of our age? That is all I'm asking you to consider. And I think the tax, and the tax itself isn't, it's not that it drops off. Twenty years from now, I'll be sixty years old. I'll be retired, you know, so it's gonna follow me that long in my life, and then it'll go away, and I'm still stuck with your order status.
We want it to be factual now. It's not twenty years. At worst, they're looking at fourteen.
I know y'all are looking to pay it off faster, and I appreciate that, but this is something that's extremely scary. When you take an elder to the doctor, and they have to wait for their entrance, we file through a BA, and then mailed back to their house with their sedatives, you're gonna pay out of pocket for that. You're gonna pay out of pocket for your food, your gasoline, your oil, your tires, your home electric, your maintenance on your house. I mean, there's a lot of older folks who just cannot get to this facility. Do I think it's a fantastic idea for the future? Just not right now.
Okay, thank you, Liz. All right, I guess we're, we got one more, sir.
I just have one more thing to ask, real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
Before everything is clear, the tax that we owe to be paid on groceries is less than than my-
It will still, but it will still receive that one.
I just want to make sure that it's the same, it will still-
Yeah, good point, good point. Yes, sir?
I spoke both lines before. My name is Rob Thompson. I agree with this fellow over here, as far as telling about the voters should be aware of what they're actually buying, in a sense, and what they're getting into. I would like to know if, what the interest is on any loan, because I've got a lot of car before, I've had to buy a house, so I understand the common sense aspect of that, but not everybody has, like the person said that. So that needs to be definitely clarified before the voters get to me, but I know that the children, a place to stay, to work out, or doing things, I think that's a wonderful concept. Somebody was talking about water aerobics. You was talking about a lady that was three hundred and sixty pounds?
Yes.
I've had a client, I am the water aerobics instructor in this town. In fact, I'm the only game in town that does water aerobics exercises, wellness exercises, not therapy, but wellness. And I've got a pretty good clientele, and I get them over from, I got some coming in from Yelvill, I got some coming in from Western Grove, I've had some coming in from Outland Home at one time. A lot of them come into Harrison because they get here for therapy, and if they go through our clinic and get some water therapy, they're encouraged to do water wellness, to maintain it. Water wellness is a fantastic maintaining of water therapy, I mean, for any therapy that comes in. It's a great way to get the weight off your joints, that the muscles can get stronger. It's great for athletes, it's great for any broken bone scenarios of any kind, arthritis, Parkinson's. I'm telling you, it's a wide range of things. Now, I'm a senior health advocate, and I've been working with seniors for, I'd say about nearly twenty years now, and I've done a lot of different things for them, and I can empathize very much so, what she's talking about, because I work with seniors that have that same scenario. But I also look at this facility as such an encompassing facility. You're talking about a therapeutic pool, and how's that therapeutic pool gonna be utilized? Can you tell me that?
Luke can tell you better.
There's a reason for me asking that.
Here's our swim guy.
Well, as far as therapeutic, and we did say therapy pool, but I've learned that it's more of a wellness pool than it is a therapy pool, because, correct me if I'm wrong, therapy pool has to have resistance?
It has to have resistance, right.
Okay, so, yeah, the wellness pool, I mean, just getting people out there involved, whether it be water aerobics, or whether it be ADA accessible, that you can wheel them down in there to be able to use that facility.
Well, you don't have to necessarily have a resistance per se, because the person's gonna create the resistance also in the pool. So it's not necessarily you have to have that resistance. If you've got a situation where you have therapy use for that pool, that might be a big deal, is a lot of these physical therapists don't have pool scenarios. I think we're the only one that has a major pool of any kind that does it. I think Jones has got a small, one person, one type person deal. And that's a good pool, but it's, again, it's very limited. So if we could work together in the community to work toward that, we can also work with the elderly that cannot, say, for example, elderly, well, clients go to therapy a lot, I mean, for some reason or another, they have to go. There's limited access to what can, that can be done for those folks, so they get the therapy in the water, they get a better results for their, for their health. I look for health, quality of life. For these, for me, that's always been my, been advocate. I like to see people when they get, like, when I work for the Adult Day Center, those folks, they go there, we take care of them. We make sure we have programs for them, we make sure they had songs and what have you, games, so that when they go home, they got something to share with their family, that we give them a quality of life, that they're just not stagnating, in other words, and getting worse. In fact, they're maintaining and doing better. We want to do that also in our facility, that's what you're doing here, pool facility, even hiking facility, there's so many enthusiasts out there that likes to walk and hike.
That's right, we never talked about the trail.
Never did, and I think that's fantastic, actually. Me, after five knee surgeries, by the way, I've had on one knee, I'm still standing here today, I wouldn't want to attempt to hike, but I'll get in that water, you bet you. But at any rate, the trail would open up the town, don't you think? I mean, it would, it would, people could see what our town offers. I don't know what ports of entry of the trail you're gonna have along the way, but I know it encompasses what the old trail's already involved, and you're gonna enhance that, and I think that's a pretty good idea.
All right, thank you, thank you, appreciate the comment. Okay, folks, if there's nothing else, if there's, what'd you say, Jim?
Well done.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll just come back to the council in a discussion amongst the council.
Given the length of the discussion, I'd like to remind council that the motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance number fourteen forty-eight on its third and final reading, because we'll have two more after this.
Title only. Ms. Barrett, I would like to ask you a couple of questions. I need to clarify something in my mind, so I understand this correctly on this, the project, particularly the land that is involved out on Gibson Drive. And I really want to do this in an open session, there's a reason behind this.
That's fine.
Our city clerk, as everyone knows, is a real estate agent, as you are the former owner, which we also need to clarify, Jerry does not own, Jerry Jackson Realty just carries that name.
Thank you.
But I think it's equally as important in an open city council meeting that, you know, there's a large sum of money that is obligated pending the people's approval to purchase the land where this is going into. What I'd like to know is, one, it has to be a matter of public record, how much have we offered for that land? And two, who are the real estate agents, both for us and on the other side, that are representing them, so we know what's going to happen? And three, if we have an agent, if Jeff's representing the city, are you going to waive your fee since you're an employee of the city of Harrison?
Sure. Good question. Is that it?
That's it.
I'll go to Jeff on, you know, the exact number that we paid for it. Jeff is representing the city. Ralph Gene Hudson is representing the owner, and at the time that they listed the property, they put a fee in there for the listing agent and the selling agent. You guys have heard of that six percent stuff, I'm sure. I don't know why everybody's at six percent, but, so Jeff representing the city would have three percent of what number?
Five hundred and forty-five thousand.
Now, is that the entire piece of property out there, Jeff?
That is for the forty-acre parcel.
Forty acres.
Okay, these are the things that need to be answered in this group.
Sure.
So these people out here understand that, you know, we're not trying to pull the wool over somebody's eye. over somebody's eyes.
No, right.
Okay. I think, I think that's equally important. Okay. What about your fee?
My fee is paid by the seller. It's not paid by the city. It's part of that transaction, part of the seller's closing cost. No, I do not plan on donating it back to the city or waiving it. I, no. I mean, that was, that was one of your questions.
And, and I guess I would take it one step farther. Do we not have a conflict of interest?
Well, I can address that.
There you go. We've, we've been there.
That's fine. That's fine.
The, there is a state statute that allows the council to deviate from those conflicts, but it needs to be acknowledged, and we have to have an ordinance in place. And I have prepared a proposed ordinance that includes Jeff in this, and for that reason, and I believe it'll be submitted, I don't have any idea of the submitting, but probably, what, next council?
September.
September.
Prior to closing.
But it, it's something that has to be voted on by council and approved by council, and it's an ordinance, and it has to be voted on like any ordinance. It's a one, it's a one-reed ordinance, but it has to be voted on and adopted by council, and that would include Jeff being on there. So, we have a going one right now. I think we did it as a housekeeping matter, probably, I don't know, several months ago, just anyone doing business with the city, and so Jeff's name is simply being added.
Jeff's actually in there right now, and has been for many years, but we wanted to go the extra step and make sure he was in there for a real estate transaction. He's in there for his printing company right now. So... Good question. And I'm glad. I, I mean, we definitely want to get everything out if there's, you know, if it's not gonna come from you, it's gonna come from little birdie, so...
It already has.
I would sooner it come from one of us around this table to talk about it properly and make sure that we understand, so...
It's a good discussion.
You know, that satisfies my questions in regard to that.
Well, the only time I was asked about that, I checked, and he was on the list, and so I said, he's able to do business with the city under our current, current format, going a further step.
And that may have covered him, but we just want to make sure and put him on there for real estate rather than just...
And for those, in what we're discussing, and so we understand, there is a long list of people that are employees of the city of Harrison, fire department, police department, they'd have other talents.
Yes. We've got two sitting at this table in addition to Jeff.
Right. And they have other talents such as carpenters and plumbers and what have you.
Tile setters.
And...
Tile setters, auctioneers.
The whole nine yards. So, that's exactly what we're going to, and, and that's good to know, because I hadn't thought about it from that aspect, so I understand.
Good deal, Bill. Jeff?
Have they looked and explored other properties, such as the property next to the post office, that might require less excavation at the level, and that would be at a stoplight corner with less hazardous intersection, as, as the one at the Gibson Road? Because I don't know if you, you pulled out there yourself on Airport Road, Gibson, but that's a suicide.
We've had so much discussion, folks, about properties, because it really started out in the downtown areas where we would have loved to have had it. The only possibility would have been Lake Harrison, get rid of the junior high and the sports complex and all of that, and there would have been enough room, and it would have been fabulous, but were prohibited to go in there because of the flood plain. So, with that in mind, I mean, that's where I really wanted this to be. Could you imagine looking out over the creek? But we went out and looked at other properties, and I think the one you talked about was on our list. One thing I know, Jeff, about that property, it's owned by, I sold two acres probably fifteen years ago off that, and it was, it was two hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it was like a hundred thousand dollars an acre. So, that kind of number was totally out of line, and one of the big pluses about being out where we're going is it connects directly to the sports complex. So, it brings everything together in one, and there's a lot of value in that. I'd rather also be on Industrial Park Road on a level spot, but there are reasons now that we went out there. Is that pretty much?
Yeah, and, and the cost was...
Well, the cost, yeah.
Substantially greater. Those other ones that you mentioned were, we looked at several other locations, and the prices were two and three times higher than the forty acres that we're looking at right now.
All right.
Call for a vote.
Yeah. Okay, we're back to a motion in a second. Is that correct?
We have a motion in a second.
I know, I know. We got a motion in a second. Roll call.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance number fourteen forty-eight, an ordinance providing for the levy of one-fourth of one percent sales and use tax within the city of Harrison, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Make a motion to approve ordinance.
Second. Adopt.
Adopt. I'm sorry.
Second. Roll call. Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion that we place ordinance fourteen forty-nine on its, suspend the rules, place ordinance fourteen forty-nine on its third and final reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Check on me to see the motion on the screen, whatever you have. Ordinance number fourteen forty-nine, an ordinance calling a special election in the city of Harrison, Arkansas, on the question of levying a citywide one-fourth of one percent sales and use tax and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number fourteen forty-nine.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?[1578.62]